Good evening, everyone. Good evening, good evening. All right. Welcome to our April performances here at School 51. As Board President, my continued vision is to promote community engagement and to unite board members as a team with each board member contributing to a specific initiative throughout the year. During the month of January, Board Vice President Stanley Neron sponsored National Mentoring Month. In February, Board Member Jerry Jacobs sponsored Black History Month. And in March, Board Member Maria Cavalo sponsors Women's History Month. As we continue the Board's initiatives throughout the school year, we will experience how important each initiative is to learning experience for our students, staff, and school communities. For the month of April, we are pleased to have Board Member Iliana Chavez sponsoring Autism Acceptance Month. I have had the privilege of serving on the Board besides Iliana for the past five years. During her time on the Board, she has been a strong advocate for special education and has participated in several activities supporting our students with special needs and their families. Before I introduce Iliana and allow her to come up, I would like to just recognize our Board members who are here. I'd like to recognize Board Member Jerry Jacobs for being here. Board Member Stephanie Stilpana for being here. Board Member Diane Barbosa for being here. I also want to recognize our Councilwoman-at-Large Patricia Perkins-Augustine. Thank you. I also would like to thank all of our teachers, our principals, our staff, our parents, and our students for being here this evening to celebrate our Autism Acceptance Month. Thank you. And I would like to also recognize Board Member Rosa Moreno-Ortega as well. At this time, I'm going to allow our Board Member Iliana Chavez, who will be introducing all of the performances this evening in honor of Autism Acceptance Month. Iliana?
Thank you. Hello, Mr. President. Good evening. I am Iliana Chavez, and it is my honor to serve the Elizabeth community as a member of the Elizabeth Board of Education. As a parent of a child with a special need, I strongly identify with our district core belief that all students can learn and achieve at high levels. During this month, I am proud to sponsor initiatives dedicated to students reaching their full potential. In honor of Autism Acceptance Month, I look forward to visit our students who participate in our autism program. I will be joining our District Division of Special Services in hosting parents workshops that help support our students with autism and other special needs and their families. I also will join our dedicated partner from Union County Board of County Commissioners at the annual Autism Acceptance Celebration at Matano Park on April 20 to celebrate the unique personality of our youth affected by autism. Additionally, I am excited to sponsor a new district initiative that teaches our students listen in personal safety. Our school counselor met early today to start training and officially launch our partnership with the Monique Bird Foundation and Goya Foods. The program provides our students with the tools to help create and maintain a safe school environment, giving them the freedom to be their very best. The Elizabeth Board of Education is committed to promote equally inclusion and welcoming environments in our schools. I am proud to sponsor this initiative. My hope is that listen our students and family learn, will help support and improve the life of all our students who attend Elizabeth Public Schools, including our students with special needs and their families too. During the month of April, Elizabeth Public Schools celebrates many special events in addition to Autism Acceptance Month, which will be reflected in our performance tonight at recognition, including National Poetry Month and Jazz Appreciation Month. To begin in the evening and performance, I would like to welcome our student from Elizabeth High School, Fran J. C. Carella Academy, and introduce Principal Michael Cummins to say a few words about their performance.
Good evening, everyone. It is my honor to introduce to you this evening the award-winning Elizabeth High School Jazz Band. But before I do that, I would like to bring up three exceptional students to tell you a little bit about their art projects they've been creating and to introduce the Jazz Band themselves. We're delighted to be here, and when we were given an option as to which month we would like to celebrate at our school, it was obvious to all of us that we would really appreciate the opportunity to do Autism Acceptance Month for the reason that we have a new autism program at our school this year, and it has been absolutely a joy for all of us. So without any further ado, I'd like to introduce you to Dios Mary Morel Diaz, and then I have Alana McBride, and Mariah DeJesus.
Here to help us celebrate is the Elizabeth High School Jazz Band.
Thank you, Elizabeth High School Fran J. C. Carella Academy for your wonderful performance. Okay, beautiful performance. Next, let's welcome our student from J. Christian Bowwich Financial Academy and Principal John Byrne, who I would like to call forward to introduce their school performance.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much for having us here today. Just gonna get it lined up a little bit. So having students with autism attend J. Christian Bowwich Finance Academy is of paramount importance as it fosters a diverse and inclusive learning environment that reflects the reality of our society. These students bring unique perspectives, talents, and capabilities that enrich the educational experience for everyone. By embracing neurodiversity, we cultivate empathy, understanding, and acceptance among all students, preparing them for the complexities of the world beyond the classroom. Additionally, integrating students with autism into mainstream education promotes tolerance and breaks down societal stigmas associated with disabilities, fostering a culture of respect and support. We are very proud to have such a fantastic group of educators working with our students with autism. I'd like to introduce Mr. Todd Letcher and Ms. Jennifer Shiffle to talk about an outstanding project and some of the great things that are going on at J. Christian Bowwich Finance Academy.
Thank you. We are very excited to be here. Jen, you can come on up. Uno momento, Sam. Well, why don't we do this really quick before... First off, we want to thank the Akiri family for donating all the materials that we could have to build these projects. Let me tell you, getting pieces of wood, hammers, nails into these students is wonderful. They're captivated by it, and it's such a wonderful activity, and we love building projects. You could ask any of our students. When the gym teacher gets a weight system, I say, "Don't put a work order in, just don't tell anyone," because my students and I will put it together most likely. We love using our hands for things, and this is a wonderful project that we could all do.
And while Mr. Letcher is making his magic with the kids in his room, on our side, we're doing some writing, we're doing some eating, or some creating. So while they're making these amazing birdhouses, we were creating poems and writing paragraphs about what we actually put together. So I will let the kids speak for themselves, and they can show you just how amazing they truly are.
Good evening. My name is Samuel Arcuri Jr. Welcome to our Spring Is In The Air presentation.
All right. Hello. My name is Jesse Rivera. I'm a student of J. Christian Bowwich Finance Academy, one of the students of Todd, Mr. Letcher's Room 20. I would like to introduce you to my birdhouse that I made. My birdhouse has the design of the Mario Kart Racing franchise. Well, as you know, every side of the birdhouse is red, green, and blue. Has symbols from every Mario Kart. On the front of a birdhouse, it has a Mario symbol with a mushroom underneath the roof, even if it's white or red. Plus... That's okay, that's okay. So on the left and left-right sides of the birdhouse, there are a boomerang and a green shell. On the top of the roof, there is a fire flower and a Mario driving a cart. And I painted its design. Each part of the birdhouse is exactly the way I want it to be. I would like to put my birdhouse outside so that the birds can enjoy it too. And that's how my birdhouse is, what it looks like. Thank you.
I painted my birdhouse like an actual house. The birdhouse is blue, and the roof is yellow. I painted seven windows on the birdhouse. There are pretty flowers all around it. Birds will probably never live it because I want to put it in my room.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Such a pleasure having these students, and such welcoming also the families, and such support we receive from the families. We have the best teachers, I think, in the district doing this, so I'm so proud.
One more real quick. Anthony really would like to read. Anthony is the oldest student in our program. When I first started teaching in the autism program, it was Anthony and myself, and we had a blast, right? Ready?
"My Birdhouse," by Anthony Young. I made my birdhouse look like what I would want my house to look like. I love watching TV, so I made every wall a different network. The walls are yellow, and the network logos I chose are TNT, CN, WB, and TBS. The roof is green. I made my birdhouse for myself. Birds won't live in it because I am going to keep it inside my house, and birds are not allowed inside.
Excellent. That is perfect. Great job, Anthony. Excellent job.
Beautiful. Another round of applause. Thank you, J. Christian Bowwich Academy, for your wonderful performance. Our next group to welcome to the performance stage this evening are from Victor Marbella School Number 21. I would like to call forward Principal Thor May Wanso to introduce the school. Number 21 video performance.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out to celebrate our autism students. We have four autism classes at School 21, and it's a thrill for me to see some of my former students up here. I must say, it's a privilege to be part of your life, to have been part of your life and part of your education. You truly hold a special place in my heart, parents. I know some of you personally, how much you love your children. I see it with my own eyes outside of school, and I must tell you that we care for them just as much at School 21. So without further ado, I don't know how I could top those other performances. At School 21, we take pride in integrating our autism and Gen Ed population. That's spearheaded by Mrs. Akbar. Mrs. Akbar, can you stand up, please? Thank you. Mrs. Akbar is the elder statesman now in the autism program, and she has done, like I said, a wonderful job of making sure that our Gen Ed students have an opportunity to interact with our autism population. They've put together a special video, which you're gonna see in a few moments. They're gonna sing along to DJ Rafi's "Ah Yeah." I'm telling you, once you hear this song, you're not gonna be able to get it out of your head. And we also have some students that we're gonna honor after the video presentation. I'd like to thank Mr. Kulik, he's right here. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes, and Mr. Kulik helped us out in a pinch the other day, and I really, really appreciate it. You have no idea how much I appreciate it, Mr. Kulik. So thank you.
Hello, my name is Joaquin. This performance will showcase the social interaction between peers. Learning how to interact with others will help students with making friends, building relationships, learning from others, and developing new interests. Socialization skills will help students socialize with their peers. Thank you.
So at this time, I'd like to recognize some of the students who participated. Okay, so at this time, I'd like to recognize some of the students who participated in that video. When I call your name, please come up to the podium to receive your certificate. Congratulations, Josephine. Stay up here. And last but not least, Mrs. Sabahat Akbar.[666.20][666.20][applause] Mrs.
Thank you, Victor Marvela School Number 21, for your exceptional video performance, and thank you for letting you to be part of that wonderful video. For our last performance of the night, we would like to welcome the student of El Mora School Number 12, Principal Melissa Kulik, and Vice Principal Gabriela Aykona, who we invite to come in forward to introduce their performance.[773.91][773.91][applause]
Good evening, Superintendent Hugemeyer, Assistant Superintendents, Board of Education Commissioners, Central Office Administrators, School Administrators, Teachers, Students, and Guests. We thank you for this opportunity to allow us to highlight our beautiful school, El Mora School Number 12. For the past five years, we have dedicated the month of April to raise awareness and acceptance by educating our students and entire community on the topic of autism through educational presentations, media, music, art, dance, and wearing blue and other colors of the spectrum. This month always brings us together. It reminds us to be kind, respectful, and accepting of others. Our students at School 12 worked in collaboration to research autism and its impact on the world. Next Friday, our entire school body will come together to create a human rainbow to demonstrate unity, acceptance, and respect for everyone. This assembly is dedicated to our special needs students in our school as well as the entire world. Thank you to our Autism Acceptance Committee, 3rd Grade Teacher Crystal Rodriguez, our speech teacher Vanessa Rodriguez, 4th Grade Teacher Betsy Duda, our special needs teacher Taylor Lantain, and personal assistants Yaili Santos and Gabby Sanchez. We hope you enjoy our presentation, a small snapshot of our Acceptance Unity Day celebration that will take place next Friday.
These are five things every autistic child would like you to know. Autism is shown in different ways, and every person presents it differently.
Autism does not affect a person's ability to feel emotions, but rather the way in which it may be expressed.
First and foremost, a child, autism is just one aspect of my character.
Please be kind. Communication can look different for all of us. Focus and build on what I can do rather than what I can't do.
Please remember to always be kind. These known people inspired individuals and communities around the world regardless of their diagnosis.
Donald Triplet was the first person diagnosed with autism. He was born on September 8, 1933, in Forest, Mississippi. Donald Triplet showed the world he was a person first, and autism was just one aspect of his character.
Armani Williams is an American professional race car driver. He was born on April 14, 2000, in Groves Point, Michigan. He went to college and studied mechanical engineering and continues to inspire others like him. These individuals were made to stand out. Our students will share in all about me.[1061.51][1061.51][singing]
Hi. Hello. Hello, today.
My name is...
Hi, my name is Bianca Dosia. I'm five years old. I wear my booty bags and socks on it.[1069.51][1069.51][applause]
Hi, my name is Iha Donokaya. I get to go to watch Little Pony Claus and two puzzles.[1072.51][1072.51][applause]
Hi, my name is Digo Bussi. I am six years old. I love to play the...[1076.51][1076.51][music]
To conclude our performance, we will sing "I Have A Voice" to demonstrate unity.[1078.51][1078.51][singing]
It's mine alone. It comforts me. It is my home. Although it's small, I'm not afraid. For I am strong in its embrace. No one can say what I have seen or understand where I have been. For what I found inside myself belongs to me and no one else. If I were blind and had no eyes to see, still I would hear the voice inside of me. I wish that you, I wish that you could hear it too. I have a voice imploring clear. It speaks the truth for all to hear. It gives me hope. It gives me faith. I have a voice. I have a voice.[1094.51][1094.51][applause]
Thank you.[1096.51][1096.51][applause]
It was amazing. Thank you. El Mora School Number 12, for your wonderful performance. We really appreciate that. And to conclude, with that, we conclude the performance for tonight, but we continue with the celebration. I want to call back our board president, Commissioner Shalene Batius Torjeli. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Eliana Chavez, for sponsoring this month. I'm sure everyone enjoyed this evening and our performances. I just wanted to also recognize the board members who are also here. We have Board Member Isaiah Rivera here and Board Vice President Stan Neron here, so thank you.[1162.87][1162.87][applause] I just wanted to say that I love the creativity of all of the schools that were here this evening. Thank you for thinking outside the box and doing something very different. I love the diversity of the jazz band and the different solos that were there, so thank you to our Elizabeth High School students at Frank Sicarel. We loved your performance. Thank you. You can give them another round of applause.[1194.33][1194.33][applause] I definitely wanted to thank Chris Bowe Academy, Finance Academy, and their special bird project. Thank you for sharing your creativity with us. Thank you for letting us know what you were going to do with your birdhouse. You were going to keep them home or leave them outside. Thank you for that creativity. We truly appreciate that, so thank you again. If we can give them a round of applause.[1219.00][1219.00][applause] I loved School 21's performance in regards to making friends, building skills, and interacting with our peers. I don't remember the "Ay, ay, here we go, ay, this is the time for our lives." Thank you for sharing that. In the midst of that song, it talked about we have to cherish every day and the moments that we have as individuals, so thank you for sharing that positive message with us. So give them a round of applause.[1250.00][1250.00][applause] And last but not least, I thank School Number 12 for your neurodiversity performance and how you talked about demonstrating unity, allowing our students to talk about that "I am strong, what I have found inside of myself belongs to me," and allowing them to, you know, use their voice to share kindness. So thank you, School Number 12, as well.[1276.33][1276.33][applause] At this time, we are going to be allowing our schools to come up with their certificates. The certificates were given to the principals and the schools already, but we would like to take a picture, if that's okay. So I'm going to start with in the order that they came up, so we can have Elizabeth High School, Frank Sicarel Academy, and the students come up, so we could take a picture with the board members. We would appreciate that. As they come up, again, I would like to always thank all of the people who always attend and those who make things happen. We couldn't do anything here without our tech team. Thank you for all that you do online, on YouTube. Thank you to Eric. Everyone loves Eric Kulik, you know, so thank you to Eric again. Again, I would like to thank our principals, all of our administrators who are here, our family and friends who are here. Thank you, thank you, thank you. To our security guards, thank you for being here as well. And if I forgot anyone, please don't blame it on me. Blame it on, I just forgot. At this time, I'm going to have my board members come up and our superintendent, if you can come up and take a picture with us, we would appreciate that. And also thank our Frank, Mr. Frank Cuesta. Yes, and thank you to our custodians for assisting with the chairs. Thank you, Frank Sicarel students. At this time, if we can have J. Christian Bowe Finance Academy students come up and take a picture with their certificate. We took one already, right? No? Okay, all right, excellent. They can come up.
Take a picture with the birdhouses. You know, you took a picture with the birdhouse, right? We didn't take a picture with the houses.
Thank you, J. Christian Bowe Finance Academy students, and thank you for letting you to be part of that wonderful video. For our last performance of the night, we would like to welcome the student of El Mora School Number 12, Principal Melissa Kulik, and Vice Principal Gabriela Aykona, who we invite to come in forward to introduce their performance.[1431.12][1431.12][applause]
Good evening, Superintendent Hugemeyer, Assistant Superintendents, Board of Education Commissioners, Central Office Administrators, School Administrators, Teachers, Students, and Guests. We thank you for this opportunity to allow us to highlight our beautiful school, El Mora School Number 12. For the past five years, we have dedicated the month of April to raise awareness and acceptance by educating our students and entire community on the topic of autism through educational presentations, media, music, art, dance, and wearing blue and other colors of the spectrum. This month always brings us together. It reminds us to be kind, respectful, and accepting of others. Our students at School 12 worked in collaboration to research autism and its impact on the world. Next Friday, our entire school body will come together to create a human rainbow to demonstrate unity, acceptance, and respect for everyone. This assembly is dedicated to our special needs students in our school as well as the entire world. Thank you to our Autism Acceptance Committee, 3rd Grade Teacher Crystal Rodriguez, our speech teacher Vanessa Rodriguez, 4th Grade Teacher Betsy Duda, our special needs teacher Taylor Lantain, and personal assistants Yaili Santos and Gabby Sanchez. We hope you enjoy our presentation, a small snapshot of our Acceptance Unity Day celebration that will take place next Friday. Thank you.[1455.12][1455.12][applause]
These are five things every autistic child would like you to know. Autism is shown in different ways, and every person presents it differently.
Autism does not affect a person's ability to feel emotions, but rather the way in which it may be expressed.
First and foremost, a child, autism is just one aspect of my character.
Please be kind. Communication can look different for all of us.
Focus and build on what I can do rather than what I can't do.
Please remember to always be kind. These known people inspired individuals and communities around the world regardless of their diagnosis.
Donald Triplet was the first person diagnosed with autism. He was born on September 8, 1933, in Forest, Mississippi. Donald Triplet showed the world he was a person first, and autism was just one aspect of his character.
Armani Williams is an American professional race car driver. He was born on April 14, 2000, in Groves Point, Michigan. He went to college and studied mechanical engineering and continues to inspire others like him.
These individuals were made to stand out. Our students will share in all about me.
Hi. Hello. Hello, today.
My name is...
Hi, my name is Bianca Dosia. I'm five years old. I wear my booty bags and socks on it.
Hi, my name is Iha Donokaya. I get to go to watch Little Pony Claus and two puzzles.
Hi, my name is Digo Bussi. I am six years old. I love to play the...[1489.12][1489.12][music]
To conclude our performance, we will sing "I Have A Voice" to demonstrate unity.
It's mine alone. It comforts me. It is my home. Although it's small, I'm not afraid. For I am strong in its embrace. No one can say what I have seen or understand where I have been. For what I found inside myself belongs to me and no one else. If I were blind and had no eyes to see, still I would hear the voice inside of me. I wish that you, I wish that you could hear it too. I have a voice imploring clear. It speaks the truth for all to hear. It gives me hope. It gives me faith. I have a voice. I have a voice.[1506.12][1506.12][applause]
Thank you.[1508.12][1508.12][applause]
It was amazing. Thank you. El Mora School Number 12, for your wonderful performance. We really appreciate that. And to conclude, with that, we conclude the performance for tonight, but we continue with the celebration. I want to call back our board president, Commissioner Shalene Batius Torjeli. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Eliana Chavez, for sponsoring this month. I'm sure everyone enjoyed this evening and our performances. I just wanted to also recognize the board members who are also here. We have Board Member Isaiah Rivera here and Board Vice President Stan Neron here, so thank you.[1522.12][1522.12][applause] I just wanted to say that I love the creativity of all of the schools that were here this evening. Thank you for thinking outside the box and doing something very different. I love the diversity of the jazz band and the different solos that were there, so thank you to our Elizabeth High School students at Frank Sicarel. We loved your performance. Thank you. You can give them another round of applause.[1531.12][1531.12][applause] I definitely wanted to thank Chris Bowe Academy, Finance Academy, and their special bird project. Thank you for sharing your creativity with us. Thank you for letting us know what you were going to do with your birdhouse. You were going to keep them home or leave them outside. Thank you for that creativity. We truly appreciate that, so thank you again. If we can give them a round of applause.[1540.12][1540.12][applause] I loved School 21's performance in regards to making friends, building skills, and interacting with our peers. I don't remember the "Ay, ay, here we go, ay, this is the time for our lives." Thank you for sharing that. In the midst of that song, it talked about we have to cherish every day and the moments that we have as individuals, so thank you for sharing that positive message with us. So give them a round of applause.[1548.12][1548.12][applause] And last but not least, I thank School Number 12 for your neurodiversity performance and how you talked about demonstrating unity, allowing our students to talk about that "I am strong, what I have found inside of myself belongs to me," and allowing them to, you know, use their voice to share kindness. So thank you, School Number 12, as well.[1554.12][1554.12][applause] At this time, we are going to be allowing our schools to come up with their certificates. The certificates were given to the principals and the schools already, but we would like to take a picture, if that's okay. So I'm going to start with in the order that they came up, so we can have Elizabeth High School, Frank Sicarel Academy, and the students come up, so we could take a picture with the board members. We would appreciate that. As they come up, again, I would like to always thank all of the people who always attend and those who make things happen. We couldn't do anything here without our tech team. Thank you for all that you do online, on YouTube. Thank you to Eric. Everyone loves Eric Kulik, you know, so thank you to Eric again. Again, I would like to thank our principals, all of our administrators who are here, our family and friends who are here. Thank you, thank you, thank you. To our security guards, thank you for being here as well. And if I forgot anyone, please don't blame it on me. Blame it on, I just forgot. At this time, I'm going to have my board members come up and our superintendent, if you can come up and take a picture with us, we would appreciate that. And also thank our Frank, Mr. Frank Cuesta. Yes, and thank you to our custodians for assisting with the chairs. Thank you, Frank Sicarel students. We appreciate you. At this time, if we can have J. Christian Bowe Finance Academy students come up and take a picture with their certificate. We took one already, right? Did we? No? Okay, all right, excellent. They can come up.
Take a picture with the birdhouses. You know, you took a picture with the birdhouse, right? We didn't take a picture with the houses.
Thank you, J. Christian Bowe Finance Academy. At this time, we can have our students from the Victor Maglag, Mavlag School Number 21 come up, please, with the school principal. Oh, we took one already. Oh, we took one. Oh, we took one. Okay, we took one, all right. Thank you. But give them another round of applause.[1600.12][1600.12][applause] And last but not least again, we'll have School El Mora Number 12, or El Mora School Number 12 come up with their students and their certificates, please. [inaudible][1604.12] Thank you, Frank Sicarel students. We appreciate you. At this time, if we can have J. Christian Bowe Finance Academy students come up and take a picture with their certificate. We took one already, right? Did we not? No? Okay. All right. Excellent. They can come up. Thank you, J. Christian Bowe Finance Academy. At this time, we can have our students from the Victor Maglag School Number 21 come up, please, with the school principal. Oh, we took one of the board members. We took one. Okay, we took one. All right. You know, thank you. But give them another round of applause. And last but not least again, we'll have School Elmora Number 12, or Elmora School Number 12 come up with their students and their certificates, please. Again, I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening and celebrating our Autism Acceptance Month. Thank you, and God bless, and have a wonderful evening.